Mr. Brown. Mr. Canning, here. Mrs. Gleason.
Here.
Mrs. Jones.
Here.
Pastor Vencey is here. Mrs. Sterns.
Here.
Mr. Kirkton.
Here.
We have a call. Praise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have we received any requests to speak from the public?
We have not.
Okay, then we move on to new business.
I'm going to be reading resolutions recognizing the service of the board members. Whereas it is the privilege of citizens in a free society to participate in the democratic process by exercising their right to vote, as well as by seeking and holding a public office as a position of trust in the representation of their fellow citizens, and whereas Mr. John L. Kirkton in April 2007 and April 2011 was duly chosen by the electorate of Bremen Community High School District 228 to represent their interests as a member of its Board of Education for two terms of four years, and whereas during his tenure, Mr. Kirkton served the district with due diligence, integrity, honesty, objectivity, and distinction, demonstrating leadership as a board president, the board vice president, the chairman of board committees on educational support services and personnel, and as a member of its committees on negotiations and labor management, personnel, policy, teaching and learning, and whereas his distinguished public service is not only a tribute to his own personal exercise of responsible citizenship, but also has served the students of Bremen Community High School District 228 as a positive example, and his commitment, a role model for their own participation in the democratic process. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Bremen Community High School District 228 hereby recognizes the distinguished service of Mr. John L. Kirkton during his term of office and expresses its gratitude for his example of high ethical standards, mutual cooperation, and selfless service to the district, to its schools, to its constituents, and to its students, and we wish him well in his future endeavors.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Sterns. Second by Mrs. Gleason. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say it's been a pleasure serving with you, John, and you've brought a lot of patience and integrity and leadership to the board. It's been great to be associated with you. Thank you.
I'd just like to say I didn't prepare a speech for tonight, but I'd be grateful for that. I think that my friends on the board, the faculty, the administration, all know the high regard in which I hold them, so there's no need to get into that. It's been a wonderful time on the board. I've learned a lot. To the incoming board members, I'd say, you know, put in the hours, do the work, read the material that the administrator provide to you, ask the questions, understand what you're voting on, and then vote for what is best for the kids, plain and simple. If you do that, at the end of the day, when you walk away from the board somewhere down the road, you'll leave with a good conscience. I did and I will. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Sterns.
Yes.
Mrs. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Canning.
Aye.
Mrs. Jones.
Aye.
Pastor Vencey.
Aye enthusiastically.
And Mrs. Kirkton.
Abstain.
Resolution recognizing the distinguished service of Reverend David Mensing. Whereas it is the privilege of citizens in a free society to participate in democratic process by exercising their right to vote, as well as by seeking and holding public office as a position of trust in the representation of their fellow citizens, and whereas Reverend David Mensing in October 2006 was chosen to fill a board member vacancy, and in April 2007 and April 2011 was duly chosen by the electorate of Bremen Community High School District 228 to represent their interests as a member of its Board of Education for two terms of four years, and whereas during his tenure, Reverend Mensing served the district with due diligence, integrity, honesty, objectivity, and distinction, demonstrating leadership as board secretary, as a chairman of board committees on insurance, personnel, policy, and teaching and learning, and as a member of its committees on educational support services, negotiations, and labor management, student services, teaching and learning, and technology, and whereas his distinguished public service is not only a tribute to his own personal exercise of responsible citizenship, but also has served the students of Bremen Community High School District 228 as a positive example, and his commitment, a role model for their own participation in the democratic process. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Bremen Community High School District 228 hereby recognizes the distinguished service of Reverend David Mensing during his term of office and expresses its gratitude for his example of high ethical standards, mutual cooperation, and selfless service to the district, to its schools, to its constituents, and to its students, and we wish him well in his future endeavors.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Sterns. Second by Mrs. Gleason. Any discussion?
And also I thank Pastor for his years of service. I was on the board when he was appointed, came on in a time of turmoil, and has led us with great distinction in service. Thank you.
I do have a statement.
Before you get to your statement, I would like to say that the work that you've put in on various committees that has been seconded by our committee, your integrity, and your insight into various committees here has greatly benefited your service.
This is a hazard of occupation that I write or speak. I would like to express my hearty thanks to the voters of Bremen High School District 228 for recusing their confidence in me by electing me twice to a four-year term on the board, to the members of the board for electing me as secretary, and to Superintendent Bill Kendall, and to his outstanding team of professional educators for their ethics, integrity, wisdom, and leadership in making this school district the outstanding educational institution that it is. Those of us, board members and administrators, whose tenure dates back to the fall of 2006 and into the spring of 2007, and Mrs. Gleason, which to the credit of the voters dates back to 1993, learn very quickly what hard work is all about, how ethics and integrity are vital to true success, and how critical it is to put personal agendas aside for the sake of group effort born of thoughtful study, civil discussion, willingness to compromise, and determination to work together as colleagues. No one had an axe to grind, no one insisted on his own way about anything, and disagreements were worked out in committee where time could be spent hashing out necessary details and coming to consensus. It was an eight-year journey of peace, tranquility, joy, and personal satisfaction in doing the job right, of being able to look in the mirror every morning, of being able to regard fellow board members, administrators, and staff as collegial friends in whom we could trust, colleagues whom we respected, and coworkers in whose honesty, integrity, and ethics we could absolutely rely, and the district has been better off for it. My expression of thanks includes also our legal team, Howzer Hizzle, which has served our district well with professionalism, expertise as school attorneys, unassailable integrity, and welcome cordiality. It has been a distinct privilege and pleasure to serve the students, parents, and stakeholders of this district in the company of all these fine ladies and gentlemen, and to keep as my first priority the education of our young people, expanding their opportunities to learn and making their educational experience a truly happy and rewarding one. Thank you very much.
Mr. Canning.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Sterns made a motion.
Yes.
Mrs. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Canning.
Aye.
Mrs. Jones.
Aye.
Pastor Vencey.
Aye.
And Mr. Kirkton.
Aye.
Resolution recognizing the distinguished service of Mr. Bill Brown. Whereas it is the privilege of citizens in a free society to participate in democratic process by exercising their right to vote, as well as by seeking and holding public office as a position of trust in the representation of their fellow citizens, and whereas Mr. Bill Brown in April 2007 and April 2011 was duly chosen by the electorate of Bremen Community High School District 228 to represent their interests as a member of its Board of Education for two terms of four years, and whereas during his tenure, Mr. Brown served the district with due diligence, integrity, honesty, objectivity, and distinction, demonstrating leadership as the board vice president, the chairman of board committees on educational support services, finance policy, and as a member of its committees on finance, policy, and teaching and learning, and whereas his distinguished public service is not only a tribute to his own personal exercise of responsible citizenship, but also has served the students of Bremen Community High School District 228 as a positive example, and his commitment, a role model for their own participation in the democratic process. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Bremen Community High School District 228 hereby recognizes the distinguished service of Mr. Bill Brown during his term of office and expresses its gratitude for his example of high ethical standards, mutual cooperation, and selfless service to the district, to its schools, to its constituents, and to its students, and we wish him well in future endeavors.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Sterns. Second by Mrs. Gleason. Any discussion?
I would also like to say we all joined the board at basically the same time, and there was a lot of turmoil, and as Pastor and I said, we went through growing pains and had to learn how to communicate and work with each other and avoid disagreements, and it's been a pleasure working with all three. Thank you.
I'd also like to express my thanks to Mr. Brown, although he's not here. It's been a pleasure serving with him. We've grown and learned things together over the past eight years.
Mrs. Sterns.
Yes.
Mrs. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Canning.
Aye.
Mrs. Jones.
Aye.
Pastor Vencey.
Aye.
Mr. Kirkton.
Aye. I'm looking for a motion to adopt the school board canvas performed by the Cook County Clerk.
So moved. Second. Moved by Mr. Canning. Second by Kirkton. Any discussion? Roll call. Mr. Canning.
Aye.
Mr. Kirkton.
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Pastor Vencey.
Aye.
I'm looking for a motion for adjournment. Sign A.D.A.
Moved. Second. Moved by Pastor Vencey. Second by Mr. Canning. Roll call. Pastor Vencey votes aye. Mr. Canning.
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mrs. Sterns.
Aye.
Mr. Kirkton.
Aye.
The hour turns 7:14.
Oh, you got it. Thank you. Get out of here.
At this time, I'd like to call the Bremen High School District 228 Board of Education Reorganization Meeting to order.
Where is the public?
Mr. Canning.
Here.
Mrs. Gleason.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Jones.
Here.
Mrs. Campor.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mrs. Sterns.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any comments from the public? Our first order of business is the old office for Mr. Johnson. Did you bring someone to administer?
Yes.
I, Mark Johnson, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of-
Wait, 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 wait.
I, Mark Johnson.
I, Mark Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of office.
The duties of office.
The office of the member of-
Office of members of the board.
Of Education of Bremen-
Education of Bremen High School.
School District 228.
School District 228.
In accordance with the Constitution-
In accordance to the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the law of the State of Illinois.
And the law of the State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear that.
I further swear that.
I shall respect the taxpayers.
I shall respect the taxpayers.
Interest by serving as- I shall respect.
I shall respect.
The taxpayers' interest by serving.
Interest by serving.
As a faithful protector of the school district.
Faithful protector of the school district.
Assets. I shall encourage and-
I shall encourage.
And respect the free expression.
Free expression.
Of the opinion by following the board members.
Opinion of the board members.
And others who seek.
Others who seek.
A hearing before the board.
Hearing before the board.
While respecting the privacy.
While respecting the privacy.
Of the students and employees.
Students and employees.
I shall recognize.
I shall recognize.
That the board members.
The board members.
Has no legal authority.
Has no legal authority.
As an individual.
As an individual.
And that decisions can-
And that decisions can-
Be made only by the majority vote.
Can be made only by the majority vote.
At the public board meeting.
At the public board meeting.
And I shall abide.
I shall abide.
By the majority decision.
By the majority decision.
Of the board.
Of the board.
While retaining the right.
While retaining the right.
To seek the changes.
Seek the changes.
In such decisions.
In such decisions.
Through ethical and constructive channels.
Ethical and constructive channels.
Mrs. Jones.
She says she wants to go.
She don't want to be in there?
Come on. You want to be in this, here? Hannah Emily? Behold the office. I, Leslie Jones.
I, Leslie Jones.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of office.
Of member of the Board of Education.
Of members of the Board of Education.
Of Bremen High School District 228.
Of the members of Bremen High School District 228.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear that.
I further swear that.
I respect the taxpayers' interest.
I will respect the taxpayers' interest.
By serving as a faithful protector.
By serving as a faithful protector.
Of the school district assets.
Of the school district assets.
I shall encourage.
I shall encourage.
And respect the freedom of expression.
And respect the freedom of expression.
Of opinion by my fellow board members.
Of the opinion of my fellow board members.
And others who seek a hearing.
And others who seek the hearing.
Before the board.
Before the board.
While respecting the privacy.
While respecting the privacy.
Of the students and employees.
Of the students and employees.
I shall recognize.
I shall recognize.
The board member.
The board member.
Has no legal authority.
Has no legal authority.
As an individual.
As an individual.
And that decisions can be made only.
And that decisions can be made only.
By majority vote.
By majority vote.
To the public board meeting.
To the board, public board.
At the board, I'm sorry, the public board meeting.
At the public board meeting.
And I shall abide.
And I shall abide.
By majority decision.
By majority decision.
Of the board.
Of the board.
While retaining the right to seek changes.
While retaining the right to seek changes.
In decision.
In decision.
Through ethical and constructive channels.
Through ethical and constructive channels.
Good resolutions.
Mrs. Campor.
Raise your hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name.
Aye, Elizabeth J. Campbell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of member of the Board of Education.
Of the office of member of Board of Education.
Of Bremen High School District 228.
Of Bremen High School District 228.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
And the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
I further swear that.
I further swear that.
I shall respect the taxpayers' interest.
I shall respect the taxpayers' interest.
By serving as a faithful protector.
By serving as a faithful protector.
Of the school district's assets.
Of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression.
Of opinion of my fellow board members.
Of opinion of my fellow board members.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize.
I shall recognize.
That a board member has no legal authority as an individual.
That a board member has no legal authority as an individual.
And that decisions can be made.
And that decisions can be made.
Only by a majority vote.
Only by a majority vote.
At a public board meeting.
At a public board meeting.
And I shall abide by majority decisions.
And I shall abide by majority decisions.
Of the board.
Of the board.
While retaining the right to seek changes.
While retaining the right to seek changes.
Such decisions.
And such decisions.
Through ethical and constructive channels.
Through ethical and constructive channels.
I, Christina Russell.
I, Christine Russell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of member.
Of member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of Board of Education.
Of Bremen High School District.
Of Bremen High School District 228.
228. In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear that.
I further swear that.
I shall respect taxpayers' interest.
I shall respect taxpayers' interest.
By serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
By serving as a faithful protector of the school district's-
The school district assets. I shall encourage.
I shall encourage.
And respect the freedom of expression.
I'm sorry, say that.
I shall encourage.
I shall encourage.
And respect the freedom of expression.
And respect. Freedom of expr-
The free expression.
The free expression.
Of opinion.
Of opinion.
By my fellow board members.
By my fellow board members.
And others.
And others.
Who seek a hearing before the board.
Who seek a hearing before the board.
While respecting the privacy.
While respecting the privacy.
Of students and employees.
Of students and employees.
I shall recognize.
I shall recognize.
That a board member.
That a board member.
Has no legal authority.
Has no legal authority.
As an individual.
As an individual.
And that decisions can be made.
And decisions can be made.
Only by majority vote.
Only by majority vote.
At a public board meeting.
At a public board meeting.
And I shall abide.
And I shall abide.
By majority decisions.
By majority decisions.
Of the board.
Of the board.
While retaining the right.
While retaining the right.
To seek changes.
To seek changes.
In such decisions.
In such decisions.
Through ethical and constructive channels.
Through ethical and constructive channels.
Now we'll move on for elections for president. It's kind of been looking for nominations.
I nominate Larry.
I'm sorry. I'd like to nominate Debbie Stern. Is there a second? I have a second I just forgot.
I'd like to nominate Larry Canning for president.
Second.
So, um, it's just a little while, right? Go on, say, we vote for-
Should it be Debbie, the vote for Debbie?
Actually. That's what we're getting votes. All right, first vote, um, for Ms. Sterns. Any votes?
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Yes.
Mr. Canning?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mrs. Jones?
That's me.
Mrs. Campworth?
No.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Preston? We should play a moment. We should do a moment.
Mrs. Campworth?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Canning?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Sorry.
Mrs. for Mr. Canning.
Oh, okay.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mrs. Sterns?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your votes. Well, we'll move on to, uh, election of Vice President.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Would you like to nominate Leslie Jones? Second. I'd like to nominate Christine Russell.
Second. Okay, so let's start the vote for, uh, Mrs. Jones.
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
No.
Aye.
Mrs. Campworth?
No.
Mr. Canning?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell? Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
So, uh, I'd like to, uh, continue to vote for Mrs. Russell.
Mrs. Campworth?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Canning?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Jones, or, excuse me, Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
No.
Okay, uh, Vice President is Mrs. Russell. Congratulations. Okay, uh. No, she can change seats, let's change seats. Okay, um, I'd like to continue on for the election for Board Secretary.
I would like to nominate Kim Campworth.
Second. Okay, is there any other nominations? There is not, so, let's take a vote.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Canning?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Campworth?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Okay, Mrs. Campworth is our next, uh, Board Secretary. Okay, we have, uh, Agenda Number Six, new bit, under New Business. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We need to fix, uh, five twenty-five, we need to fix a time and place for, uh, regular Board meetings.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? On the, on the time and place, uh, for our regular Board meeting schedule? And we all have it in our packet, so if you have any discussion, that would be the time. Okay, if we don't, let's go ahead and take a vote.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Canning?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Campworth?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mrs. Sterns?
Aye.
Okay, fantastic. Uh, moving on to Agenda Item Number Six. I'm looking for a motion, um, for the appointment of, uh, Rosenthal, Murphy, Copelance, and Don Hugh as the next District Attorney.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
We gotta have a motion for discussion. Motion and second. Fully noted. So looking for a motion for the appointment of Rosenthal, Murphy, Copelance, and Don Hugh. Those are next. Second. Moved by Mrs. Russell, or second by Mr. Johnson. Now, is there any discussion on any of the board members on this Agenda Item?
Motion to table. Motion to go as, I'm sorry, second, the second.
Uh, we need a vote?
I'd like to give some reasons if I could.
Sure.
Um, first of all, I don't know how this came to be on the agenda. Um, I don't believe it was a recommendation of Superintendent Kendall. And we didn't have a President at the time, and we also didn't have three board members. The three of us who worked in the old Board knew nothing of it, so it didn't come from us. So my question is, how did it get on the agenda as a business item?
How did it get on the agenda?
Yes.
Uh, it was put on the agenda by the administration, Mrs. Gleason.
It was their request, or yours?
Uh, I had handed some materials over to the, uh, administration for them to consider, uh, putting on the agenda for tonight.
My question then goes to, um, let's vote on table first.
Okay, we're gonna vote on tabling the issue.
Mrs. Russell?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
My motion's, oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
It's gonna take a while for procedures, so please be patient.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Canning?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mrs. Campworth?
No.
Mrs. Russell?
No.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Okay, so we are not going to table the issue, so we'll look at, uh. We'll make the motion, looking for a motion, uh, for the appointment of Rosenthal, Murphy, Copelance, and Don Hugh.
Can we make a motion first, or can we have discussion?
We, we already did it, it did pass. Okay, so now we're voting on the new attorney.
Okay, but can we have discussion?
No, not now.
Yes, we can. There's a motion on the second on the floor.
She was asking for it on the last one, but it's already closed, but it did not pass, the table of issue.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's what she was asking.
Um, I'm asking to have a discussion? No, not table.
On the table? Okay, okay.
Can we have discussion?
Yes, we, we certainly can discuss it.
Um, well, I was wondering, um, how we came about the attorneys. I have a lot of questions about the attorneys, because I don't know much about them. But there's a lot of things to consider with, um, as group regarding choosing an attorney. That's a big decision, and I think, you know, according to the taxpayers and, and to do all the due diligence, um, that I have several questions I need to ask, both, um, how it came about and how, uh, what do they specialize in before we choose a, an attorney? I, I, with all respect to your deci- uh, your decisions and the decisions of the board members, um. Uh, what was the decision that made you decide that, um, the former attorneys were not? That you wanted to get another attorney instead of the current attorneys?
Okay, Mrs. Jones, there was a lot of outcry from the community as it, as it stood with the current, uh, Board Attorney. Um, there were several people that thought it was inappropriate for a board member, um, to have, uh, a family member represent the district while there was a sitting board member. We have to rectify that situation, and that's why this Board is here tonight.
Um, did you not know that it is not, if, there is no law that states that it's, um, a conflict of interest at any, at any form?
Uh, I, not, I'm not aware of that, of any law, but what I'm aware of is the community, and we have to be the voice of the community, and after getting several complaints on my own, not to mention, I won't speak for the other board members, but, um, the situation had to be dealt with, and although I do believe that, uh, our Hauser and Izzo did a fine job for us, it was inappropriate, coming from the community, stating that it was inappropriate to have them represent us with a current sitting board member and his son as a employee of the law firm.
Have you found out at any time that they misrepresented us on any?
I don't know if they misrepresented us on any, I mean, uh, as far as that goes, but I'm looking at the ethical standpoint of it, and it was not okay with several community members, um, that which pay taxes and that demanded change. So, I presented the paperwork to our superintendent for this new attorney. They are very highly skilled and experienced in school law, government law. They represent municipalities, um, junior colleges, and I feel that they'll be a fine representative and that you not have any ties to anybody as far as family or any other ties, uh, that would make it unethical.
So is it your belief and the belief of those that you spoke with, um, that no one should ever have anybody that's related to them?
Legally know it's unethical. And it, it had fallen on deaf ears when I asked that, uh, Mr. Gleason not take part in district business, and I would, this board member would have been fine with continuing with them, having him deal with other matters other than District 228 business. So that fell on deaf ears, so that prompted this situation to go with a new attorney.
Okay, 'cause I know that there, um, I, once I looked at the agenda, um, and I saw that we have another attorney, I did, um, check with, with, um, everyone, you know, uh, I did check with several members and to find out if, um, there was any issues or any problems. Um, I did look at the, um, attorneys, and on their, even on their website, once I did discover their, they didn't, it doesn't seem that they represent any high schools. Does that not?
They have experience representing schools, yes.
Schools, yes, but high schools, uh, a little bit different.
I believe that they had represented, and don't quote me on this, I believe, uh, Hinsdale South High School. And I may be misquoting that, it's in that area, but, uh, I'm not sp- I'm not being specific on that, 'cause I just don't know.
And what, uh, process did you go through to, um, find this attorney? How do you know?
Well, he's an attorney for Country Club Hills, and I've watched him several times on their broadcast. He represented them very well, um, and I had talked with people that knew of this firm, and they spoke very highly of them.
Is there anybody from that firm tonight that is here?
No, uh, Mr. Mr. Murphy could not make it today, he was called into a, uh, a meeting.
Um, also, are they skilled in real estate law? Because I know that a large percentage, about eighty percent of the tax dollars do go to, um, uh, do go to the schools. That's how much a lot of our funding. Are they skilled in tax laws?
I believe they are, yes.
Believe they are, no, they are?
They are.
They are?
Yes.
Okay, um, also, are they, um, uh, I wish they were here, or someone was here, so they could actually tell us that, you know, what they specialize in. Also, there is a matter of special education. Um, there's a lot of liabilities and different things that I'm concerned about as regards to special education.
Do you know it?
Uh, do you know of any cases that they've done?
No, not offhand.
Represented?
Not offhand, I'm sure they have, but I, I couldn't state any to you at this point in time.
Also, well, I have a couple of more questions. You know, by, um, because with something this big and so serious, I, I have to ask questions.
Sure.
About how many, how many of the constituents, um, had, uh, an issue with the former attorney?
I don't have a number for you, but since I was elected to the Board two years ago, I had been constantly getting, uh, emails on the subject of saying that it was inappropriate to have a family member represent the district when we had a current board member, and that was related.
Did they give us any examples?
I can give you those emails if you'd like, but I cannot produce them right now.
Okay, no problem.
Sure.
Not gonna put you on the button right now as far as producing the emails, I just wanna kinda get a, a figure. Also, um, uh, have you, since you've been a board member, 'cause we came on around, I believe, the same time, have you, uh, had them to notice that they lost a case or any, South Hauser, that's who I'm speaking to?
Do you have to repeat that again?
Has that?
South Hauser.
Saga Hauser, lost any cases?
For 228?
For 228.
Not since I've been here, no.
Have they caused us any money in litigation or in court fees that we ever had to go for?
I'm not aware of that, Mrs. Jones.
Seeing that there is no conflict of interest and only comes into play if you're, um, usually, uh, it's a conflict of interest only if it comes only into play when there is a contract involved in, as far as school law. And what is the track record of the new attorneys?
I don't, I don't understand the question.
How, uh, what is the track record? How many cases have they won, how many cases have they lost for school difference?
We'll have to get that information for you. I, I don't have that information.
I would be very interested in knowing that, because we have, you know, someone coming in knew that, we don't know if they lost the case or won, but their track record is.
Well, what we have to make sure is that our teachers, our support staff, and our administration always get a fair hearing. Now, I'm not saying that they have not gotten a fair hearing because of the way the situation was, okay? But we always have to guard against them not getting a fair, uh, tra- uh, hearing, okay? And, um, people felt, and again, I will supply you with some of those emails. People have told me personally that that situation was not appropriate, and could we please do something about it? And coming off of a campaign, that is the time where you have to listen to people, because they're the ones that put us in our seats.
Absolutely.
And that is why that is on the agenda, and that is why we're going to vote on a new attorney tonight.
Okay, um.
Because we need to listen to the community.
I absolutely agree that we do need to listen to the community. However, I think we need to also do our due diligence in our research on the new attorneys that we are getting, because we don't know who they are. Um, you, you know.
We'll make sure that you get a packet and all the information that, that, you know, could answer the questions that you have. And I'm sorry that I can't answer all of the, all those questions specifically at this moment, but we'll make sure that you get a packet of their information. And at this time, I'd like to move on with, uh.
You have some questions?
She shouldn't know that.
Excuse me?
Go ahead. Ms. Sterns has the floor.
I, I understand the, the concerns of the community. However, I'm concerned that out of all those, the school legal firms that are out there, um, this seems like all of us weren't involved in this decision. And I don't feel comfortable making, uh, a, a decision when I haven't even met these people.
Sure. Can I, and, and I'd like to ask you a question on that, because I just don't know, I wasn't here back when you were elected and back when they brought on.
I wasn't here when they brought them on, they were here before I was.
I would, you know, I don't know. I would, you know, I don't know the process that they went through to elect that particular attorney at that particular time.
And I can tell you from other experiences I had, usually, there's introductory meetings where everyone gets a chance to meet them, um, maybe consider more than one firm, and then a vote is taken and the majority votes on, on a choice.
But you don't know that's how it happened?
I don't know, I don't-
No, I mean back on the attorney that we're, we're looking at.
I don't know, but also, but I'm not, you can't say that what they did was right or wrong, I'm just saying going forward, we don't have a choice, we don't know anything about them, and yet we're being asked to make a decision.
Sure.
And they're, they don't even have the courtesy to be here to answer questions. Okay. So that doesn't, I mean, for me, it doesn't look good, and not just looking good, but it doesn't sound well with me as far as we're having to make a decision on something we just got introduced to and just got put on the agenda maybe two days, two, a couple of days ago, and, you know, I know you couldn't ans- you didn't have the answers to it, I don't feel comfortable that them not being here, it seems like if they want to represent us, that they would actually be here to say, "Hi, I'm here," uh, and, and to answer the questions. And if it's the concern of the taxpayers and you have, uh, all the, the flood of emails that you, that you're saying you have, then the taxpayers as well should be interested in knowing who the new people are, because you said that they, they had a problem with a conflict of interest, there was conflict of interest, and their taxpayer dollars, what they're spending. So my point is, is, um, I would not feel comfortable at all, uh, voting on a, on something I don't even, I haven't even had a chance to investigate, and that we don't, we don't, we don't, as a Board, you, I, uh, and the rest of the Board members-
Correct.
-don't have the answers to these major questions if they've ever, what is their track record? If I hire our attorney-
The vote to table it has already failed, Mrs. Jones.
I understand.
We need to move on to voting to either approve or not approve our new Board Attorney. You certainly have the right to not, uh, vote in favor of, uh, our new attorney.
Absolutely, and thank you for your, for the time, I think.
Any others?
Of course, yes, I have several questions. Um, Mr. Canning, you say that because I'm the one that's being called into question here, my ethics and those of my son, um, who did you ask to have him removed from our cases, and who told you no?
Excuse me?
You said you asked to have him renewed from doing business with 228, who did you ask?
Had your son, who did I, oh, I asked our Superintendent-
And he told you no?
Uh, no, it just, I had never gotten an answer back from Dr. Kendall on that.
And you perceived that?
I had, I had asked, uh, that, uh, Bill, your son, be removed from 228 business because of the outcry from the community that I was hearing, and that, again, as I stated before, seemed to have fallen on deaf ears.
And did I not have this conversation with you when I mentored you as a new Board member, and you had no problem?
Mrs. Gleason, I was way too new at that point in time, so I can make that jump.
But, um, but, we're gonna talk about conflict of interest, isn't it fair to let everybody know that, uh, John Murphy represented Mrs. Russell before the Electoral Board, and he also represents-
Absolutely, he's a great attorney.
-the township you were employed with?
He's a great attorney.
But you don't know much about?
He, he represents, well, you know, again, we need-
So is this a conflict of interest that he represented Mrs. Russell, and now the give back is that we're gonna hire him? But we certainly haven't vetted out the firms.
That's an accusation that you have to be careful with, Mrs. Gleason.
But it appears that way because you didn't even bring any other firms to us, and in looking at, uh, when I saw their name on Friday, I looked at their website, they represent six school districts, as Mrs. Jones pointed out, none of them are high school districts, four elementary schools, and Marin Valley, they're basically a municipal law firm. How much do they charge per hour?
I believe it's $200 an hour.
And does that, is that just for partners, or is that for all members?
I'd like to finish your question. It's $200 an hour, and it's $10 cheaper an hour than our, our current-
Is that for partners and associates?
Pardon me?
Is that for partners and associates?
Yes.
I'm sure of that.
Yes.
And do they charge for, uh, Westlaw investigation?
I'm not sure.
Do they charge for, uh, Xeroxing?
I'm not sure.
'Cause there's thousands of ways to pay a bill.
Well, I'm not an attorney, and I certainly don't wanna play one tonight at the Board meeting here, um, any of that information definitely can be made available to you.
And I did ask Dr. Kendall if he placed this on the agenda, and he told me he was instructed to place it on by you, just for the record.
I was asked by Dr. Kendall if we should do that, and I did instruct him, because I knew that, uh, the Board needed to vote.
As one Board Member?
Well-
Who was not President at the time, because we didn't have that authority, Mr. Canning?
As one Board Member that had gotten constant, uh, comments and complaints as the current situation.
That you never relayed to anyone until the election.
Any other questions?
What is the change of the crossover to bring them up to speed?
Pardon me?
What will it cost us to bring the new firm up to speed?
Well, they're going rate, I would imagine. $200, $200 an hour.
JFA contract, the best contract.
Which, knowing, there's a $10 an hour savings over our current.
But to redo work that's already been done.
Well, there is going to be cost and changeover, no doubt, but to listen to the community, I believe that's money well spent.
And, and Mr. Canning, I have no problem with listening to the community, but I think the way you went about this, there shouldn't, you asked if it's been, how it's been done in the past, there were RFPs put out, multiple firms came in and presented to the full Board, and a decision was made.
And your son, uh, your son's firm got the-
That's correct.
Okay.
May I, may I, may I add this, I had the-
You, you had your questions, we must, we must move on.
I have three more things I need to shake the-
Excuse me?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. I did do a little bit of due diligence in the time that I had. Um, I did check to see how long that our current law firm has been practicing. They have been, since I believe the 1980s, they've been representing District 228, and there has not been a lost case yet. They have saved the, the taxpayers and several thousand dollars in litigation, um, is there a contract cost or any bids that were given out there? 'Cause I haven't received any other-
No, and that wasn't our procedure at electing Mr.?
What was the procedure?
I don't know. I'm trying to find it out.
Oh, no, I'm talking about bidding hits. Um, I did do, and then just to verify what you were asking, Debbie, um, I did check with that as well, and, uh, in the past, the Board was presented with, uh, three attorneys at least. Usually is the, is the, um, I guess the minimum for finding an attorney to represent everyone in the district, uh, especially District 228, so just to answer that question that you kept presenting, um, but we just don't-
Just get the illusion we're involved.
So I just, I, I tried to do as much due diligence as possible, uh, considering that's the, uh, the citizens that are-
Due diligence is duly noted. Is there any other questions? That's where we go with the-
Clarification, so the way this attorney firm was grown, chosen was by watching them represent, uh, the city of Country Club Hills on video, on TV?
That's how, that's how I, I have seen them over the past years.
Well, you're the one making the recommendation, 'cause I doubt that, I mean, unless you were having alienated meetings, how did you vet this with the other Board members?
Alienated meetings in what, in what form?
Well, how did you get all the other Board members who weren't even Board members at the time to come along?
That is not breaking the law, because they were not sworn in.
You wanna talk about ethics?
Okay.
Any other comments?
Lots.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, looking for a motion. We already had the motion, so we're looking for the vote.
So for the record, all the other, all the other Board members that were sworn in tonight, they knew about the attorneys?
I believe that they had the same conversation.
And all of them? Uh, I just wanted, if they're comfortable with that, right?
Wait, no. Go ahead.
All right, Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Canning?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
No.
Mrs. Jones?
No.
Mrs. Campworth?
Aye.
Mrs. Sterns?
No.
Motion carries, we have a new, uh, District Attorney representing us, uh, Rosenthal, Murphy, Copelance, and Donahue, too. There is no announcements, and I look for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, audience, for coming in.